Yeah, it doesn't seem to be.
The name, were you that close to him?
I have no staff tonight on camera. That's my commute. I've been lucky all these years.
Okay, I'm gonna start the meeting with the Shastberry School Board at six thirty. And we'll begin with citizens' comments. Is there any citizen comments? I don't see any. Okay. I was told by Rick to wait for him to get here before we did the audit, so we will go down to the financial and do the treasurer's report. You don't have it in front of you. Is there any questions on the treasurer's report?
Fairness, the North Bennington tuition payment that represents one student.
I believe there are three of one.
I believe so.
Insolvent payment representing a third of tuition for one student.
Anybody else? Okay, I need a motion to approve the, so move treasurer, okay?
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous? Alright, I think what I'm gonna do, 'cause I wanna do the number two after. I guess we'll go to the consent agenda. I'm changing this around a little bit, but I'm just buying time, obviously, so. We'll go to the consent agenda. And we have the minutes of October ninth. Do I hear any questions or comments? I didn't see anything.
Did you make any mistakes, Richard?
Yeah, yeah.
What's that? Well, she couldn't make it tonight.
No, I know.
So confess.
I forgot where it is. It was one of my best ones.
He's confessing.
Okay. I wanna try, I wanna do these all at once in one motion, so we'll go to the warrants. And we have warrant number one thousand seven. It's in the amount of forty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-six cents. Number one thousand eight in the amount of seventy-four, one fifty-three, eighty-five. One thousand nine in the amount of forty-six, eight thirty-four, ninety-two. And two thousand four in the amount of thirty-three, one fifty-seven, sixty-seven. Any questions on those?
I had a couple of questions here, but Rick's not here, so. Jeff probably knows the answer.
I may.
For me? One took place on voucher number two thousand four. There was a cooling and heating issue with refrigerator.
Kitchen.
Just, I remember that as being a used unit or something.
I can't, I think, yeah, I think it was.
I was just curious what.
What's it been doing? I don't know what they did.
Just keep that one for, come to last.
Well, it was just a question of, are we gonna be facing more, or?
Oh, okay.
In their opinion, is it, you know, is it, that was just something that came along unexpectedly and?
The five hundred and seventy-five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What do we, is that, would that be a walk-in refrigeration unit?
Yeah.
That's what this would be.
Yeah.
Should be.
Yeah.
I had a question about that, too. Not to interrupt you there, but do we, in our arrangement with Abby, does it pass along these sort of expenses to them?
From my understanding, the equipment is ours. Shastberry's and Abby's just using the equipment with their employees, and so we?
We make care of the service.
The other question, Frank, was on the same batch number two thousand four.
Yeah.
There was a ninety-six hundred dollar expense, and it says per quote. That's, that's in line with some of the ongoing heating.
For those that are made up?
It's about middle of the page, Jeff.
What page?
Uh, I'm sorry.
Ninety-six hundred per quote labor to install the six units.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
So it's, yeah, I was putting all the one, two.
Okay, so we're moving, we're moving along with that project.
They're in, yeah. We've tested them last.
Good timing.
Then the other thing is a hundred and seventy-five dollar repair for removing popsicle sticks from a drain? Do we have to be in popsicle sticks to?
I was speaking to this talk about that.
You know, maybe we should outlaw popsicle sticks.
Maybe we should.
I'm done.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Alright, and after the warrants, we have a nomination for a, you might have to help me with the last name, of Kelsey Leard?
Leard.
Leard, paraprofessional. Any questions or comments on that?
And this goes to serve, or fill the position that Jeff has requested.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Qualifications, Jeff? She seems.
She's overqualified.
Yeah.
I mean, she's got her teacher's degree in Rhode Island. She's kinda getting her license here in Vermont. Yeah, she's gonna be a great addition to the school.
Okay, I need a motion to accept it.
I found the typo in the minutes. I have to share this. It's on page two, line thirty-five. This was, this flew out. The additional Abby person will also be able to help with other deities from time to time.
Whoa!
Should be.
So we need any extra help?
What did you mean by that?
We've got a direct link upstairs. You got a love spell check.
Yep.
Good. Okay, need a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved?
Second?
Second.
Alright. All in favor? Aye, unanimous?
No, abstain.
One abstention. Okay, one abstention, Richard.
Same reason, huh?
Yep.
Well, that's right.
That gotta be me.
No, that's fine. That's fine.
He's gonna break into that song.
My deity.
Okay, I guess Jeff will go to the facilities.
Okay. Um, we talked about this for a couple of months now, as far as going with radios, hopefully for the classrooms. We have a quote from, the company's called The Phone Doctor, but it's Paul Rice down in Bennington. He gave us the quotes for the radios at twenty-three fifty-one. Uh, we have some money in the equipments under facilities that we could use to purchase these radios. Again, I think it's the best way to go compared to phones.
I was gonna ask you about that tonight. Okay?
Yeah, um, the staff favored those over the phones, um, basically because of the cost and they're portable, take them outside for recess wherever they wanna go around the area. So I guess we're looking to hopefully make a decision on that tonight.
So you wanna, you wanna have a motion on this?
Yes, please.
I need a motion for the radios. Can we make a motion in a second?
Twenty-three fifty-one?
Twenty-three fifty-one, ten.
And, and who?
The phone doctor, Paul Rice.
And I need a second. Okay, a discussion.
Jeff, the range is suitable?
Yeah, more than suitable.
And your staff is fully supportive that this is a good?
Yeah, they're fully, I mean, we, we talked about the other options, and this one made the most sense.
How many radios, Chuck?
We're gonna get twenty-five radios in one base intercom for the office area.
Twenty-five radios?
Yep.
So there'll be a few extra?
Yeah. Yep.
They rechargeable?
Yeah, yep, they're rechargeable. And I don't, I don't foresee that being a huge issue. They're gonna be at their bases most of the time anyway. They only give them for emergencies, or they take them out to recess once a day and put them back.
So they'll, they'll live on teachers' desk and recharging?
Yep, basically, yeah, ninety percent of the time.
Have you actually, you've had, you've had one here and checked it out?
I haven't had this model here, no. Um, we have some similar models. We have, I think, three right now. Different models we're using throughout the building for different things that, which is another reason it's kinda difficult, 'cause we have three different models that don't, they don't all communicate together. So sometimes I'm carrying two radios, depending when you're holding me at times. It's alleviate that problem. But the, I talked with Paul about these, and he said they're very, they're very nice models, and I trust his opinion on them, so.
You type a service contract or anything with it, Jeff?
Not that, not that he mentioned.
Thinking about that, or?
No, he didn't mention that, and I can ask him about that.
Pat just mentioned they're less than a hundred dollars a piece, so.
Yeah, eighty-five dollars a piece.
You got some extras. Single channel, Jeff?
No, multi. Yeah, which is another reason I like them, so we could have one station just for the teachers in the classroom, and then have one on the side that I could use if anyone wanted to get ahold of me. And that way, teachers aren't hearing communication throughout the day and interrupting the class.
And the money's in the budget for that, anyway?
Yeah, we have some money in the facilities, equipment, yeah.
Alright, and snow removal.
Do we need a vote?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we do. All in favor of the radios?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay, fair enough. Now, snow removal.
Snow removal. Last month they came, Phil Harrington's no longer gonna be doing the plowing for, he did the firehouse and the school last year. He's cutting back quite a bit. He's no longer doing either one of those. I know, I think Larry, you might have asked me about the firehouse parking lot, if that's cleared. Somebody did, I thought.
Yeah, that did.
Because the buses do that whole loop in front of the firehouse. So in the past, it was Phil who did both. Jay Coonrad, who owns Sycamore Landscaping, offered to do the whole plowing all season long for a thousand dollars flat fee. The board asked me to get some quotes from some various people, just so we'd say we've asked around. I got a quote from Weaver. We asked a number of people. We only got two quotes back though. One from Weaver for a hundred and twenty-five dollars per plow. Depending on how many we get, that could be the difference. And then John Soretta was a hundred and forty dollars per plowing. Again, Jay said he'd do all season long for a thousand dollars flat fee. And he's here early enough in the morning, he can already get it done before school starts. He's here during the day, so if we get a little snow squall in the middle of the day, he can get out there and clear out some, at least a bus loop and parking lot, so.
Do you know what the trigger was for like a Soretta or a Weaver to come and plow? In other words, greater than two, greater than two inches, or?
No, I didn't, I didn't get that information.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, I know exactly what you mean. Um, I didn't get that information as far as how much.
Well, most people, if it's an inch or two, they'll, they're coming.
Yeah, yeah.
They're gonna plow ya.
Yeah.
Jeff, what about sand? I don't know whether Jay, 'cause that came up in conversations with Jay, but, or if it's?
He can sand also.
Is that part of, is that covered as part of this price?
Yep.
They would include that.
Yeah, and he did give me a letter, I don't know if it's taken away from Sandy, but it does give me this quote for a thousand dollars for the season. So we have that.
And the quote includes sand in writing?
It doesn't. I can ask him, I can ask him to put that in, in writing for.
Just ask him, that's all.
Yeah.
But we know Jay.
Knowing Jay, I can't imagine he's gonna leave it in a straight cut there.
No, I know, I understand.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, do we still have a question about the fire department and?
Well, he, he, he would, I think he's taking over the fire department also, since Phil's not.
He'll do the whole thing.
Since Phil's not doing that, he's gonna take over the fire department also, so.
So that makes sense.
Yeah.
So for its pleasure. You got three bids.
It's tough, but, you know, you've got two to buy the job. One that's a flat fee, and there's no way to predict what, if the flat fee is a good, it sounds very good.
Yeah.
It really, do we take a change?
You gotta plow, you gotta plow eight times, right?
To make it back.
Eight times to make it back, you know? The average has been seventeen hundred the last five years, I think.
Yeah, okay. There you go.
You guys pick.
You want a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to accept Jay Coonrad at a thousand dollars flat fee for, for the, for this winter season.
Okay, and there's a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, now, the audit. Sorry, sir, I had you wait.
I apologize. I just got off the spit.
This guy's, uh. I was asked to have you wait until Rick got here, so. He's here now.
He saw me roasting a little earlier, so.
Yeah, I, I had to leave. I could've sat for the whole thing, but.
You didn't wanna join me, huh?
Didn't wanna join you on the, uh.
Did you all, it's on the web. Do you want hard copies? Do you guys have?
I didn't see it, so.
I'll let you pass out copies, Rick, before I.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Fairly informal.
I'll sit in there. If you don't mind, that's fine. Okay, um, just to introduce myself, my name is Alan Walther. I'm a partner with the Bonde Deo Group, who are the school district's external auditors. Rick just passed out to everybody two reports. There is a required communications letter, and then the financial statements, including our auditor's report. The first report that I'd like to go through is the required communications letter. As its title indicates, required communication anytime that we perform an audit, we issue this letter. The important information here, on page one, there was a new accounting policy adopted during the year. The school district adopted GASB statement sixty-three. Financial reporting of deferred outflows of resources, deferred inflows of resources, and net position. Only real change that you'll see in the financial statements is that the financial statements previously indicated net assets, that terminology was changed to net position. GASB sixty-three has effects on deferred inflows and deferred outflows. The school district doesn't have any of those. So the only real change that you'll see is a terminology change. On the top of page two, significant estimates affecting the financial statements. You think of the financial statements as numbers. You think of the numbers as exact. That's not entirely true. There are a couple of significant estimates that affect the financial statements, the most significant of which are the depreciable lives of capital assets, the building pronouncement that we're sitting in, and the estimate of accrued compensated absences. We considered the key factors and assumptions used in developing each of those estimates and determined that they were reasonable in relation to the financial statements taken as a whole.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I've forgotten your name.
Alan.
Alan. So accrued compensated absences is vacation time that hasn't been taken?
Vacation in sick time.
Sick most, sick most likely.
Yeah, mostly sick, 'cause the teachers don't get vacations, so. Yep. Yep. And difficulties encountered in performing audit in the middle of page, if we had any difficulties, significant difficulties, significant, significant difficulties, we need to disclose them here. And we're pleased to, to say that we did not have any significant difficulties. And then finally, on this report, at the bottom of the page, disagreements with management, the same type of concept, if we had any disagreements with management with regard to the application of accounting principles, with regard to journal entries, with regard to access to records, anything like that, we'd have to disclose that here. And again, we're pleased to report that there were no such disagreements. That's the extent of my comments on the required communications letter, unless there's any, any questions. The, um, the financial statements, if we take a look at that, let's take a look at the, at the table contents. And I'll go through what's included in this document, and then, and then we'll take a look at what I think is the important information for the board, plus you, for the board to know. If you look at the table contents, the, this document is broken into five sections, the independent hours report on pages one and two, management's discussion and analysis on pages three through twelve, the financial statements, and the notes to the financial statements on pages thirteen through thirty-one. The revenue expenditures and changes in fund balance, budget versus actual on page thirty-two. Report on internal control of our financial reporting and non-compliance in accordance with governing audit standards on thirty-four and thirty-five. And schedule findings and responses on, I'm sorry, thirty-three and thirty-four, and schedule findings and responses on page thirty-five. It's important for the board to remember that of this thirty-five page document, pages one and two, thirty-three and thirty-four, and thirty-five are the Bonde Deo groups. Those are our reports. Pages three through thirty-two, the financial statements are yours. Even though we assist in the preparation of the document, the financial statements are yours and not ours, okay? If you only have a limited amount of time to spend with this document, do read the ten pages that the management's discussion analysis. That gives a good overview of the results for the year, the school district's financial position, et cetera, et cetera. It is written in relatively layman's terms, okay? So having said all that, let's flip all the way to page thirty-five. What page thirty-five is, is the schedule findings for the year. So what this does in a one-page summary gives the results of the audit for the year. And the highlights here, the, under the financial statement section, type of waters report issued was an unmodified report in the past. We had a terminology change. We had a accounting or an audit standard that we had to implement as CPAs this year. In the past, I was known as an unqualified opinion. Now it's unmodified. It's the same. Again, it's a terminology change. Unmodified opinion is the highest level of assurance we can give on your financial statements. With regard to internal controls over financial reporting, we noted no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. And with regard to non-compliance material to the financial statements, there was none noted, okay? So the overall results of the audit are very favorable, unmodified opinion on the financial statements, no instances of material weaknesses, forcible significant deficiencies, and no instances of non-compliance, okay? So let's flip all the way back to page one and two, which is the independent audit report. For those of you who I see familiar faces on the board, for those of you who've been on the board in the past, the independent audit report, the format has changed a little bit. Again, that has to do with our auditing standard that we have to implement. The information that is reported here is identical to the information that's been reported in the past. And the important information for the board is at the very top of page two, which I'll paraphrase. In our opinion, the financial statements present fairly the financial position of the school district as of June thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen. Again, that's what we as auditors call the unmodified opinion, the highest level of assurance we can give on your financial statements. Pages three through twelve, as I said, are the management's discussion and analysis. I'm not gonna go through that. But again, if you only have a limited amount of time, do read those ten pages. Let's flip to page thirteen, which is the statement of net position. That's our big change with that GASB that we implemented this year, last year. That was called statement of net assets. Literally, that's the only thing we changed. What the statement of net position represents is the, the, the school district's financial position as of June thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen, using a full accrual method of accounting, okay? So what that does is it takes the entire school district as a whole and looks at what the, um, total assets and total liabilities are. So basically, you take all your funds, combine them together, and then add in your long-term assets, which are your, your capital assets, and add in your long-term debt. And the, um, the highlights here, the total assets of the school district, one million, three hundred and forty-three thousand. Total liabilities were a hundred and twenty-six thousand. The, uh, the accounting formula is assets minus liability brings you to net position of one million, two sixteen. Of that net position, seven hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars is your net investment in capital assets. That's your capital assets less the debt that attaches to those. And your unrestricted net assets, or net position, I'm sorry, is four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. This information, again, is presented on the full accrual basis, and is the entire school district. It's not the same accounting methodology as you use for budgetary purposes, okay? Which if we flip to page fifteen, this is the budgetary basis information, page fifteen. Page fifteen is the balance sheet for the governmental funds. What the balance sheet represents is the snapshot of the school district's financial position as of a period in time. That period being the end of your fiscal year, June thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen. The highlights here, um, in the, the general fund is the main operating fund. Total assets, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Total liabilities were thirty-six thousand dollars. The accounting formula, again, is assets minus liabilities, brings you to total fund balance of four hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Of that four hundred and forty-two thousand dollar fund balance, two hundred and fifteen thousand was appropriated for subject expenditures expenditures. That's the amount that was used to balance the two thousand and fourteen budget, the budget year that we're in right now. And two hundred and twenty-six thousand is unassigned. That would be the amount of, of fund balance available for two thousand and fifteen and such and so forth. The capital projects fund has ninety-six thousand dollars available to it, and then the, the other fund that you have is the, um, fresh fruit and vegetable program. Page sixteen, we'll just take a brief look at this. The, the general fund, we'll ignore for now. What we'll do is, we'll put forward in the report, and we'll look at the general fund results versus the budget. I think it's a little more meaningful. The capital projects activity for the year was solely a, a, a transfer into the fund from the general fund. And then you can see that the fruit and vegetable fund had, um, ten thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars of activity during the year. If we flip to, having said all that, let's flip all the way to page thirty-two, which is the statement of revenue and expenditures, budget versus actual for the general fund. The general fund is the only fund for which there is a formally accounted budget. So the highlights here, total revenue budgeted was two million, six hundred and seventy-eight thousand. Actual revenue, two million, seven ninety-nine. You had a favorable budget variance in revenue of a hundred and twenty-one thousand. Expenditures budgeted, two million, seven ninety-nine. Actual were two million, six ninety-three. So you had a favorable expenditure variance of a hundred and five thousand. So the net results for the year is the, the third line up from the bottom, the net change in fund balance. You had actually budgeted to extend one hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars as your fund balance. You grew your fund balance by thirty thousand dollars, so you had a net favorable budgetary balance, balance of, um, two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars.
Alan?
Yes?
Original budget versus final budget, what's the difference?
Budget amendments during the year. I don't know, Rick, if you have any?
Largely had to do with unusual circumstances last year.
So just in general, then, it's whenever we're asked to approve a transfer?
No.
That wouldn't, that wouldn't go into this? That wouldn't change?
No, that, that, that transfer is budget neutral.
Okay.
The actions you took last year for the supplemental assessments from the SU, as a result of the difficulties we had at the SU level, resulted in your increased budget.
The, um, just flipping back to the, to the, uh, financial statements. The notes to the financial statements on pages nineteen through thirty-one, there are no, um, significant new notes. We did implement GASB sixty-three that had a minor change. The notes to the financial statements, um, give details on your accounting policies, details on your capital assets, details on your long-term debt. There's really nothing very significant that I want to point out in, in those, um, on those pages. And then finally, on pages thirty-three and thirty-four, is a report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance in accordance with government auditing standards. When we do a government audit, um, the state of Vermont actually, um, requires that we issue this report. So we consider your internal controls and, and, you know, responsibility as your auditors with regard to internal controls is to report in writing to you if we find any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. Those are the most significant, those are the most severe internal control issues. And then if we have other matters or concerns, we may issue those in a management letter or another internal controls letter, which we actually didn't have anything of any consequence this year, so we didn't issue that. So all this, as, as you remember, when I went through the results for the year, we had no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies to report. And this, um, this report at the very bottom of page thirty-three, the second and last sentence there, um, I'll paraphrase, just says we did, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that we considered to be material weaknesses. Okay? That is, again, um, the highest level of assurance we can give with regard to your internal controls. And then finally, on, uh, page thirty-four, at the very top of the page, the, uh, under the compliance and other matters, um, heading the, uh, important information here is the very last sentence in that, in that paragraph, which reads, "The results of our tests disclosed no instances of non-compliance or other matters that are required to be reported under government auditing standards." So that is the extent of my comments, unless there's any questions. The, uh, the financial statements are issued in draft. Uh, yes?
I'm getting bad looks for asking a question here. Very general question. I assume Shasbury has one checkbook and it's in control of central office. And that, that's primarily how all the money moves in and out of, okay? And are there any peripheral areas that, that contain money that you would see? Um, incidental funds that might be used for just the day-to-day operations or do you look at that? Do you note that? Do you know of that?
A petty cash type fund.
That sort, that sort of account.
Um, if there are any petty cash funds, they would be included in the cash and cash equivalents line. If, you know, if, if you're looking at page fifteen, they're in, in there. I can't remember, Rick, do we have any? If, if there are, it's clearly, it's clearly immaterial to what we do. And if you're asking whether or not we count it or reconcile it or we redo any audit procedures to it at all, the answer would be no, because it would be.
Unless, unless it was one of your tests that you pulled, because how we replenish petty cash is through a PO.
Right, correct, that is correct.
So there's, I think you're, I think Shasbury has a two hundred and fifty dollar petty cash. And, you know, if they go out and buy some stamps or something, to replenish that petty cash, they have to put in a PO, provide the backups for what they spend, we would replenish that if by chance. They, you know, because they give us, they give us a, they take a random sampling of our POs and say, "Give us all the backup for all these things."
Right.
Whether it was this year, I'm sure at some point in time, they pulled that one and looked at it.
I'm not concerned, I'm just trying to understand policy and procedure. And that would be true district-wide?
The biggest question where, yes, that would be true district-wide. The, um, the biggest question which, where I thought you were going, and maybe you were, maybe you're not, was activity funds, those aren't district dollars. Those aren't under your, um, tax ID dollar. Those are kids' parents' monies that kind of gets handled by their, the office and the teachers and various things, but it's not under the purview of me, it's not under the purview of the treasurer.
It's, no one ever looks, no one ever is a columnist.
I'm hoping he and his staff are looking.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
But I, I don't audit them, I don't, I mean, I don't have any control over them. The treasurer doesn't have any control over them.
Great.
Any other questions? The, the reports are issued in draft format. As far as we're concerned, they are complete and the final versions will be, um, as is. But please, you don't feel free to look through it. Let us know if there's any, um, any changes or any other questions that you might have.
Do we have to take action on it at some point?
Uh, when it's final, I'll have you.
Yeah, typically accept it, most of them second.
But I, I wanna, I wanna go through the management discussion analysis, see if there's any corrections I need to make or any final things. And they've got to put their blood, they go through a quality control, this doesn't go through a quality control for their final. But once that word draft is off, then I'll, I'll ask you to accept it.
Anybody else outside? Okay, thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Turn around. See you next year.
Next year.
See you next time.
We'll see a couple of them in a couple of weeks.
See you, uh, see you next week.
Do we contract district-wide for the audit?
Yes. Actually, it's a good segue, and I don't know if Alan, he's sitting down, he might want to, this will be interesting for you to hear. Um, there is, well, I think you heard it, because you were at the SU finance meeting. Um, there's a new statute as part of a technical correction to Act one fifty-three that, um, to ensure that all school districts get audits, it is now required that the audits, audits be contracted by and paid through the SVSU. So what we're gonna do for FY fifteen is we've got to build that, we've got to build your audit into the SU budget.
Increase your assessment.
And it's, it's just gonna be just like we do special ed. Whatever your cost is, we're just gonna pass through to you.
You're gonna pay for it, but it's different.
You know, I think it's sixty-nine hundred bucks is your audit fee or something. So we're gonna build that fee in, in SVSU, we're gonna bill you for it. We get the assessment, we're gonna pay them. But the state's requiring that and putting the onus on me to make sure that every district has an audit, because apparently there are a number of districts around the state that have not been getting audited.
Who, who, who will the audit opinion in that case be given to?
It'll still be given to Shasbury.
It'll be given, it'll be given to the Shasbury.
You are the entity.
Or will it be given to?
You are, you are the entity.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, definitely the Shasbury.
That's what I'm just asking.
It's just a managerial function that the state's requiring me to make sure that it happens.
Yeah.
And would that include North Bennington?
Yeah, it includes North Bennington graded school district, it does not include the village school.
Okay. All set?
Can I go home?
No, yeah. Yeah, you're all set, Alan.
I'm dismissed, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, and I'll move right to the topic of this discussion, District One. And I put it like that, I think it was the easiest way to try to explain it, what we're, what we're talking about. Um, I think Shasbury has a chance to, uh, improve the educational experience and offer more opportu, increased opportunities in this district than, than ever. Um, if we, we go after more revenues and, uh, for the, for the Shasbury kids and for the taxpayers. And, and with that said, um, I'm gonna, Larry and I have been doing some research about District One. And Larry, I'll turn it over to you, because you've got more of the, well, information than I do at this point.
I'd like to ask the board's support in continuing a conversation that actually started in eighteen seventy. That's the first time that a relationship between North Bennington and Shasbury was openly discussed. Conversation continues, um, on up through to the present time. Um, at, at different times along the way, uh, there've been conversations, there've been, it's been a hot topic in town for a period of time, and then it, it goes away because nothing really changed. Uh, so what has changed is obviously North Bennington, uh, becoming a private school. And, uh, initially, I thought we could address this question after the change in North Bennington took place by making it a town issue, okay? And pursued that, that avenue, um, to the point of getting advice from Judy Stratton, our town clerk, that we might want to contact, uh, the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, their legal department, to see if, in fact, that was a reasonable way to go, is to put the issue in front of, of the town, excuse me, and, and, um, take a, uh, take a direction that would exclude the school from being basically in the conversation. Uh, the League of City and Towns came back and said, "No, in their opinion, it was a school issue." At this point, we haven't gone any farther with it, because honoring the code of ethics, I don't want it to appear that, that one individual is out there, um, trying to do work, uh, behind the board scene or whatever. I want the board's approval to continue this conversation and their support in looking at the possible opportunities that we have, um, should we choose to take advantage of them. The conversation I mentioned, uh, comes down to, at this point in time, in my opinion, comes down to looking at our responsibilities to provide a education as outlined by the state of Vermont using public funds to send our kids to a public school. That's what I'd see as our, our mandate. Um, and it's clear that, that revenues generated by the property taxes, uh, from Shasbury taxpayers are clearly being used or will be used to fund a private school. Uh, I think it's our, um, responsibility to make sure that, uh, we are doing the correct thing. I'll take a breath. So if it's the board's pleasure, I don't think we need a vote or whatever. I think there's more to the conversation. Um, I'd like, uh, permission to, uh, work on the board's behalf and, uh, make an occasional report to the board as to what I found. And, uh, at the end, seek the board's direction as to, um, which way they'd like to go. Uh, would they like to leave things as they are? Or would they like to, uh, look at the possibility of dissolving our relationship with North Bennington in regards to educating our children?
So Larry, when you talk about continuing the conversation, um, can you give us a sense of who you might be having the conversation with?
Sure.
Or who we might collectively be talking with, who you might have already had conversations with?
Well, originally, I, as I stated, we, we started with the League of Cities and Towns. Um, when they came back with their opinion, uh, I went to our school board association, okay? And asked their opinion, because I wasn't quite sure if, if the League's, uh, Cities and Towns had it right. I wanted to be certain that, that their advice was correct. Um, so I asked the school board association and their attorney, okay? Which, uh, we're members of, um, what their opinion was. And, uh, they've, they haven't got back to me with a formal, um, opinion as such. The one that they gave me at the point of conversation was, um, that they might be interested in backing us with it, but they also might not be interested. But they would give us an opinion as to, um, their position on it. They clearly stated it's a landmark case in the state of Vermont. Um, there's going to be a fair amount of interest in, in the direction this goes in. Um, and I assume they're being very careful about whether they want to be a player or what. That's, that's one, one discussion. That's really the, the only discussion we've had outside of the one we're having this evening. Uh, there are, Dave, you asked the question, who we talk to. I think there's a variety of people that we can talk to about for more information, but I think we really need to determine what kind of information we need in order to make this decision or commitment to, to go in this direction. Uh, there's obviously local, um, historians, Tyler Wretch being one, we haven't talked with him. Uh, there's historical databases like the Bennington Museum, um, the Bennington Banner, things in that area that we can look for for documentation or support. There's some very, very, very interesting questions that, uh, that come along with this conversation. So we may need those sources and we may not, depending on, uh, the opinion of, uh, I believe, uh, legal sources is going to be our first requirement, um, very soon. And, and based on that conversation, you know, if you allow me to do that, if you allow me to bring that in, then, then we'll have a much better direction.
Town Shasbury is, is it unique in the state in having a, some of its, um, president's students attend school in a town that doesn't have a public school or that has a?
Yes. Uh, there are only two towns, forgive me, I, I don't know the name of the second town, but we're one of two towns that, that enjoy this, this relationship, so. And, uh, just as a footnote to that, Dave, that was the old relationship, okay? Uh, the new relationship, uh, there, there's no one else that, uh, is presently collecting public funds to support a private institution that I'm aware of.
While operating a public school.
Thank you, pardon?
While operating a public school. There are some that do not operate a public school that support a private.
Right, right.
Now, I mean, it's, in, in, in a sense, and I think it's an important sense, that, that we're all, all, we're all paying tax dollars to Montpelier, and some of them are going to North Bennington to educate the students who live there, simply because of the fact that we have a state tax system.
So that's a true statement, correct?
Hmm.
As it was last year?
Yeah, right.
Before they?
But, but last year, the education.
I know it changed, but essentially, we paid taxes to the state and it came back to the school.
Globally, that's the correct statement, although Shasbury is with, um, all the other towns in the SU are considered, they don't use this terminology, but they are considered receiving towns. I mean, you, um, a rough number out of heaven, my heaven, you guys, your budget, your ed spending is five million dollars, somewhere in that ballpark. You raise taxes to the tune of probably about three million dollars, so you receive two million from other rich communities to support it. So, um, what, your statement is true globally from a state of Vermont perspective, but you don't necessarily send tax dollars up there to come back to North Bennington. You're not a sending district, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
So the goal of the discussions that you would, that you're looking for the board to nod to would essentially be, this is, uh, maybe I'm talking too plain, would be essentially to dissolve District One?
Ultimately, yes. That would be, speaking again, plain.
Speaking plain. The goal would be to dissolve District One and, uh, compel might not be the right word, but invite the students from that district that live there. but invite the students from that district that live there to go to Shasbury Elementary.
Those children.
They could still have options.
They still have every option that they presently have. It's just a question of who pays for those options.
Right.
Okay? We're not compelling them to do anything.
Yeah, I didn't mean the right, wrong words, but I'm just trying to talk.
Those technically are our children, okay? They reside in Shasbury. Our mission, so to speak, is to educate the children of Shasbury. Our obligation is to educate the children of Shasbury in a public school. Okay? And henceforth, the collection of property taxes that are the vehicle for funding those public schools. The rules have changed as far as North Bennington goes. They're now a private institution. I don't feel, and I believe I'll be supportive in this, I don't feel that the public dollars that are collected on Shasbury property to educate Shasbury children should go to a private institution. May not make us sound like a nice neighbor, but it's not written that we're always going to be nice neighbors. This is a longstanding relationship that stood the test of time for over a hundred years. And we didn't change it and there was no appetite in town up to this point to change it. Because North Bennington ran a public school, is a good school, okay? And people were content to leave things the way they were. At one time, it served the need. North Bennington took an overflow of children from Shasbury, accommodated them and did a good job in educating them at a reasonable price. It was a good relationship.
So Larry, I want to be sure I understand. Your goal here, as you just described, it would be to change the rules essentially so that residents of what we call District One, the town of Shasbury, would be part of the Shasbury School District.
It would just fall back into the Shasbury School District.
And so if you lived in that, in that part of town, your kids would come to the Shasbury School?
Initially, they would be required to come to the Shasbury School.
Initially?
They have the option.
Their school of enrollment would be Shasbury.
That's right.
Right.
So they have the option like?
They could, they could pay tuition to?
After that, they can go?
The Catholic, you know, what is the Sacred Heart potentially. I'm just making that up.
Just as a child over here in?
Yeah, could, could.
You know, Ox Avenue could go in here.
They have the same options that every other child has in Shasbury.
They don't have the option, though, to attend the school in North Bennington without paying, without?
That would be the change, as it would if they chose to send their child to Bern Burton.
And we don't have that information anymore, I think, on the monthly enrollment reports. But how many students are there? Do we know?
Forty-one.
Live in Shasbury and attend?
Forty-one.
Forty-one students are in District One.
Are in District One. We've asked Jeff to look at the impact of what that would, that would look like. I think, not to put him on the spot, but looking at classroom sizes, the, we, when they finished this wing of the school, the statement was made that this has a capacity for three hundred and seventy-five kids.
I was going to say three sixty, but yep, you're there.
And it's reached as high as three hundred and eighty-nine grand, I think, under your, your watch.
Didn't we have some trailers at that time?
We had trailers out back.
Trailers came down, though.
Yeah, they're down now.
Yeah.
But when we were that big.
For a while.
When we were that big.
But, so we're well under that. Even projecting that forty kids come in back into the system, we're still at two eighty. We've been that for a number of years since this school was built. Jeff would, and his staff would have to do some work as to how we can best accommodate that. I don't think it presents anything we can't become comfortable with.
This may be too early in the process, but in your initial information gathering for this, does your, does your intuition tell you that there's a real possibility of dissolving the, the district as it stands now? Or are the barriers maybe too great? Or we shouldn't be scared of them if they're too great, but I'm sure there are significant barriers. I think there's acts of legislation.
Saying, he's not the educator in the room.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not the lawyer in the room.
No, no, okay, all right. But there's significant barriers.
You asked me about intuition.
Yeah.
In the research, I've been looking at this for a year.
Yeah, yeah.
And again, not as a school board member, as a listener across the street, whose job it is to protect the grand list of the town of Shasbury, okay?
Yeah.
And under that light, I've been doing this work, looking at our possibility, different possibility scenarios. And I really feel that that door is, is.
It's possible, it's possible.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And I think that's part of the interesting information that we've, we've looked at so far. And we need to frame that information now to look at what is the actual opportunity? What will it take to do that?
Well, I think it's an interesting concept, I can tell you. And I, I looked at that, I don't know, fifteen, twenty years ago. And I just didn't do it the right way. I did it a certain way that I was told to do it by an attorney, but that wasn't, you know, wasn't the right way. That's why I never finished it. But it's something I think that the school should know, research further and get some answers. Right now, we don't have all the answers.
Well, Fran was following up in the work that he did years ago. That conversation of perhaps going in a different direction actually started in fifty-three, okay? There was a hot topic in fifty-five. In the late sixties, it became even hotter and culminated in the, about seventy-nine, when it was, there was some action taken that actually hoped, the hope was it would clear up the definition of six, of School District One. Okay, and there's supportive, that's current enough, so there's tons of supporting material that shows what happened then, okay? And here it is again, and I don't think anyone had the appetite to make it a topic today, except for the change that's taken place. It is a, it is a change to what I think we're committed, asked to do, have the responsibility to do as a school board here in Shasbury. And part of that is to create all of the positive, most progressive opportunities we can to educate our children. We do a great job of, in my opinion, of doing that here in Shasbury. And the other is to give the taxpayers of Shasbury the best return on their investment possible. And this will allow us, should this happen, this will allow us to succeed even further than we are right now. Again, in my opinion. But let me, give me the opportunity to advance that opinion and involve you folks in making that decision.
To me, for me, anyway, it also raises the opportunity to hire the best teachers in this area and have the best programs, especially in technology. And you would have the monies to do that with. And I'll tell you, that's, that's where it's gotten me to want to continue to research this and maybe move forward. But we need more information, obviously. And I think we ought to pursue it at this point. We've got nothing to lose. I just think it'd be informative if we did move in that direction. That's my opinion.
I, you know, I'm going to say I agree that it would be interesting to continue the conversation, Larry, and I'm all in favor of saying, continue doing that. Just as far as money, though, and the tax rate on Shasbury, people go, I just want to talk about that for a minute because we're, and if we bring in forty-one more students and don't spend any more on staff to educate them, then we end up having a lower per people cost and that's good for our taxpayers. The tax rate goes down. But it doesn't mean that there's suddenly a big pool of money that's coming from the however many residences there are. That, I mean, if we want to spend more money, we'll have to vote more money to spend it. Right, I mean, that's a decision we can make now, whether we have more residences contributing or not.
Well, not really, because the more students you get, okay, for the sake of argument, let's say we got ten more students. And I know Rick doesn't like me to say this.
Don't say it.
Okay, it will give you more revenues.
Yeah.
Okay, but I won't say it the way I usually do. But you can have more revenues to hire that teacher or to put in that program. You will get more revenues.
Okay, so why doesn't Rick like you to say that? Or maybe Rick should speak for himself.
Well, because, David, you're correct. I mean, there is not, I mean, pre-X sixty, there was a block grant associated with each child and every child that walked through the door brought in with them maybe six hundred dollars. That doesn't take place anymore. What, and I did an analysis for this board a few years back, which will, you know, is conceptually correct. The numbers, obviously, have changed as time has gone by. You know, with the number of students and budgets and stuff, but, you know, conceptually, it's, it's the same. But yeah, just as you said, if you bring in forty more kids and there's no more expense, you bring down your cost per pupil, your tax rate comes down. What that allows you to do is you have a greater grand list and a greater capacity to buy that technology and grow the tax rate very incrementally. So I think that's what you mean, Fran, by there's more money available. I mean, you know, you can, you know, you could keep, you know, bring those kids in, keep the tax rate the same. There's a lot of money to spend.
There's a lot of money, yeah, yeah.
There's a lot of money to spend. Now, I mean, I'm not going to tell you how to do it, whether you're going to spend it all or spend some and give some back to the taxpayers. I mean, that's a decision that you guys have to make as a government body, but.
I think at some, at some point would be.
That analysis that Larry just pulled out, you know, is.
Yeah.
Conceptually accurate. And I took a significant amount of heat for producing that. Yes, you did. And. Accurate document.
This, I skipped over this as, this was part of the conversation, took place in two thousand nine, two thousand ten. I asked Rick, I wasn't on the board at that time, I asked the board if they would go ahead and make this comparison and put that information out there. This is the form it showed up in and in my opinion, it's dramatic. And again, but again, it's, it's four years old, five years old, the information in it. I don't think things will change to lessen the impact of making this change. Okay, I don't think that that's what we'll find when we go ahead and do something similar. And that will be one of the exercises is to talk with Rick about redoing this with current information so that you folks have in front of you exactly what the financial impact's going to be to the town should we, should we accomplish this. So I'm sorry I missed that, that page of the, the continuing conversation. The, just a couple incidental numbers, though. We're talking, we, the property in District One, what's considered District One presently, is about fifty-four million dollars, okay? The state estimates that that would return to Shasbury if they were to get the full impact of the taxes collected on that, that that would sugar out to be about a half a million dollars a year. So again, those, that came from the Department of Ed, okay? And again, those are the numbers we'll try to refine and get down to points that we can easily understand and build into our thinking, so.
Any questions? The only thing I'd like to add to that, and it has nothing really to do with that, but, you know, we, Larry and I have been going to all the finance budget meetings and this and that and David's attended some. We're looking at the SVSU budget right now between ten and twelve percent increases. We do have teacher negotiations coming up, starting here soon. We also, we haven't done the MAU budget yet and we haven't really started our budget yet either. So, I mean, I look at it as, you know, any resources that we can get in the future is going to help this school along financially and with students. And we're going to have a lot more opportunities. But anyway, with that said, are we ready to make a decision? I don't think we have to take a vote or anything, do we, on that?
Only if you, only if you want to expend funds.
Okay.
Well, let's talk about that, because that's where I'm at a little bit. This is going to require legal consultation at some point. So we don't have to make any decision on that tonight, roughly. But we do have to have that in the back of our minds because budgets are here. They're not right around the corner, they're here. So that's just a kind of, you know, we want to budget that, we want to let the townspeople know it at a town meeting and that we're, if that's the direction that.
Well, I think we need to research it more.
That we get information on and if that's the direction we end up going, then we need to do that. Yeah, that's fine.
That would be one of the points I'd bring back, Pat.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is we can have an initial conversation with a recommended attorney and bring that information back as to what his projection of the actual cost to the town might be and the direction it might go in. To go to your other question of do we stand a reasonable chance of doing this?
Right, right, yeah, yeah.
So we should be able to come back with both those points and be better equipped to decide.
Make a decision.
Exactly. And that's my whole intent, is to give you folks information enough so that this, this becomes a consolidated effort.
Yeah, well, do everything upfront so all the board members know what's going on and I think that's the way to go. I have no problem with it. I could, you know, I'd like to give Larry the approval to do it.
Yeah, do you anticipate, Larry, having, coming back a month from now with an update?
Easily, yeah, easily. I would anticipate we'd have monthly updates from now until, until spring.
Till you either do it or you don't.
Exactly. The time is right. It needs to be done if we're going to do anything. Timing is critical.
The only, the only intuitive downside that I can see on it, and I'm going to give you my nod, I'll say that right up front, is because I think getting the information is worth it for the town of Shasbury. But, you know, intuitively, if we add forty or fifty students to this building, and even if the building has a capacity of three sixty, there will be expanded class size, which my intuition tells me that a class has twenty students instead of eighteen, it's a little bit harder for the teacher, it's a little bit harder for the parents. You know, the lower student to teacher ratio is always better, but we have guidelines for that. There's policies in place.
We've openly discussed what those are.
We know that we have policies, so they're agreed upon.
There's things that are in place that are going to determine that.
To determine that.
We have this gentleman right here that's going to make it work or it doesn't work, one or the other.
It feels bad, but it's the right thing to do.
Well, it gives Jeff and his staff a, I think, an adequate amount of time to look at the impact that that may have and make good, sound decisions on what's best for our kids. And if it requires a classroom or requires another teacher, another parent, I think this board will be totally supportive.
Absolutely.
And we're, I think even at this point, we're confident the funding to cover those additional costs will be more than adequate, so. A little different situation than what most schools are normally faced with. Of expanding or shrinking enrollment and where does the money come from or not?
Okay, so I'm okay with it, David?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Okay, there you go.
For information, yeah.
All righty, good, thank you. Okay, we will move right to policies. There is a policy, number fifty-seven oh five, Shasbury Quition Policy. That is for adoption. I need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous. Okay, number one thousand, Policy Drafting Committee. That is also for adoption. Need a motion in a second?
So moved.
Okay, second, okay, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous. Number four thousand thirty-five, it's conflict of interest in hiring, this is for warning. Need a motion in a second? So move, okay, second, okay, Pat, discussion. No discussion, okay.
I mean, I've just, you know, I have been trying to, I've gone to a couple policy committee meetings, so if there's anything you need me to bring back, I know you asked me to go, so I've met a couple, so.
Yeah, you could.
If there's anything you need me to bring back, let me know, and if you don't know it now, you can email me.
Okay, no.
Afterwards, okay?
Yes.
It is in. I owe you one.
Okay, all right, all in favor of the conflict of interest for high, for warning? Unanimous, okay. Number five thousand two, prevention of harassment of students, that is also for warning, need a motion in a second?
I'll make the motion.
All right, that second, okay, discussion on that one?
Just wanted to request that everybody become aware of those two policies, the next, that one and the next one.
And the bullying.
Yeah.
That, we all need to know what's contained in there, take a look at it, make sure that we're all comfortable with it. These are critical issues that we're gonna be looking at for a long time to come, so.
Oh, yeah.
And make sure everybody has their opportunity to, to understand what's, what's being presented.
Yeah, and this was at the meeting, this was brought up, and, you know, these are two policies that the committee asked everybody's help in getting their comments back and getting these worn and agreed upon quickly, because these are two mandated policies by the state, so, you know, you know. It's not that we, I mean, we want input and, and resolve the issues and get them taken care of quicker, you, you were at the meeting, I think, with that one.
I'm just gonna make the comment that I've made before in these situations. These are existing policies that are being modified. The five, we have a bullying policy, and do we already have a harassment policy?
Yeah.
Significantly modified, though, to meet state standards.
Okay, so this is an existing policy that's being significantly, significantly modified.
Yes, updated. A lot, a lot of discussion went on that, because there were certain people, you know, at the meeting that felt that the current policy didn't meet state standards.
So, the format.
So, but, but there's been changes and there you go.
The format of what, what we were given anyway, doesn't make clear what the changes are to the existing policy. And this is the comment that I've made before, we're seeing policies for, for warning anyway. The, what we just looked at on the conflict of interest highlighted the changes that made it very clear what the new parts were and what the parts were that had been, if, you know, xed out. So I don't know, I'm not sure why we can't get that every time.
We, we were getting those at one point.
We have been, we have been, I would say more than enough, but not, it's not always.
Well, I think Pat could get those for us, I'm sure.
Yes, I can do my best, okay, I'm, I'm new on the team.
When's the next policy meeting?
I, I was, I don't know.
Okay.
I gotta, I gotta look at the calendar, it's in, it's in, it's in December.
Yeah.
But it, it bounced, we actually canceled the meeting.
I know, I know, we, I canceled it.
Was it the first Monday, first Monday?
Yeah, but that was bad for people, that was bad for some people, so it's, it's bounced around a little bit, yeah, bounced around.
Because the policy committee gets it with all the direct changes, correct? And then it must be cleared out.
Yeah, they should, yeah.
This one, I think, was a unique one, I know that there was our posted policies, I think, on the website, and I think that due to some issue, I think this, there was a state one that got posted on the website too.
Right, well, this is pretty much the state.
By, by Catherine, and I think this is a copy of the state one, which I, I don't personally recall this being.
We may never have had all the changes.
You really never put this right through the normal, because I think this is a, you know, I wanna, I wanna discuss this in the policy committee meeting, that's where it should be discussed, because.
I was gonna wait until after all.
Because this is just for warning.
Yeah, and, you know, the model policy book, which the state does, I, I don't know why, I think a lot of these meetings, and I've said it before, because I sat on there for a number of years, and I'm saying, our, our answer to people at SVSU, while we'd like to tweak them a little bit, because they're already done, if you wanted to save your administrators and, and stuff, a lot of meetings and time, you could actually follow the model policy.
Right.
You guys got better things to do than rewrite these things all the time, and I, and the state's doing them, so, I mean, they're, they're gonna be to the point. And they're gonna be enforceable, so, but that's just my opinion.
Yep.
Because sat there a number of years and, and it takes sometimes two and three years to get a policy adopted, it's crazy. So, but anyway, that's my two cents. Okay, the prevention of harassment of students, that's for warning, I think we had our say on that, so. Yeah, all in favor on that one, unanimous, okay?
For warning, yeah.
Last one, five thousand three, prevention of bullying of students, that is also for warning. And any, need a motion in a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion on that. Seeing none, all in favor of that one, unanimous, okay, good. Alrighty, we'll go to the principals' report.
Okay. As you know, through our AYP, that meeting in mathematics last year for handicap testing, we had to create a school improvement plan for the state mandate. We have a draft plan created through many long early mornings with some dedicated teachers. We currently have the plan to the superintendent, she's gonna review it, and we have a peer review. Also, somebody outside the district's gonna review the plan, give us some feedback, we'll make any necessary changes and submit it to the state by December twentieth for their review and their acceptance, and then from there we'll implement the plan. I think it's a good plan, I think it's, the teachers that we've worked with are very excited about it. It's been a tough process, but it's been also a, a good process for us. And I will share that with you once we have a final draft of it, and you guys can take a look at it and see it from there. Last Tuesday, we had a special day, we usually have our sugar run, our annual sugar run, which is the day after Halloween, but if you remember, Halloween and the day after Halloween was wet, so we actually had it last Tuesday. I wanna thank Mr. Harrington for setting it up again, it was just our school this year, it was, it was a very nice morning, it was a little chilly, but the kids got going. We went to Howard Park, kids ran their mile, their half mile, every kid participated, all, pretty much the whole staff was there, it was, it was a great morning, it was a lot of fun, and I wanna thank Mr. Harrington again for setting that up, it was, it's a great tradition, I hope it continues. And that afternoon, we had Andy Newell come, who's a local resident, went to school here, and he did a, a speech about goals, and his goals and what he needed to do to get to the Olympics for the third time this year. And talked about skiing and, and all those activities and training around that, and presented to the kids, and that was, that was pretty exciting also, to have him around. I'm gonna skip three for a second, so I can give the ladies a little more time, and go to last Friday, we had a Veterans Day assembly. Again, I wanna thank Tiffany Hall, our fifth grade teacher, she helped organize and, and set that up, along with Ms. Sugri, our music teacher, who set up some wonderful music assemblies with our kids. And Mr. Ken Coonrad, a local veteran, brought in some other veterans and did a wonderful presentation for the students, really educated them about what Veterans Day is all about, it was, it was, it was a good afternoon. So, we had a busy week last week with assemblies, but they're all very good. Last, but definitely not least, I have two ladies here run our after-school program, which I think is pretty much second to none, from what I've seen, they do a great job of bringing some really different, interesting activities for the kids. I'm gonna turn it over to them so they can share some of their progress this year with after-school, Ms. Megan Donkers and Ms. Jess Smith, you guys wanna come up? So Megan's our president, right? That we call you?
We actually are co-directors. She's the money. So, we are co-directors of the after-school program, we have renamed the program Shastberry After School Incorporated. It's a five oh one C three corporation that was started in two thousand eleven. So, the mission of the project is to provide educational opportunities for all of the elementary school children that attend Shastberry Elementary School. Kristin Zens was one of the major forces behind getting the five oh one C three status. That allows for us to apply for grants and other opportunities that wouldn't be available to us if we didn't have that status. We have a board of directors, and we will be organizing a meeting in January. Now that Kristin has turned the program over to Megan and myself, Megan and I are both volunteers. We're both parents of students that attend school here, so we have been working diligently to fill some very large shoes that were left by Kristin in the spring. So, we just wanted to give you sort of an overview of what we have been up to this year. We have been serving between sixty to seventy-five students, which is great. We offer programs from three to four thirty every day after school, and we only charge fifteen dollars for the entire six-week program. We rely heavily on volunteers and also school teachers providing their classrooms, and I'll just tell you that this room, Mrs. Carey donates the space, the children meet here at three o'clock, and then we disperse them to the various classrooms, and we'd like to really thank Mrs. Madison, Mr. Harrington, Mrs. Umflit, Mrs. Gates, Miss Outwater, Miss Watson, we even have been using the kitchen this year to do cooking programs for the children. We also rely heavily on parent volunteers, that helps us keep our costs down. There are a number of parents that have provided assistance and teach regularly. Frida Gardner, April LaCroix, David Spur, Nissa Wach, Melissa Morrison, Lily Beth and Mike Foley, Tim Scoggins, and our principal, Mr. Johnson, stays regularly and helps in any way and every way that he can. We also have reached out to the community to provide volunteer staff for us. We've reached out to Bennington College, we have two Bennington College students, one provides our hip-hop dance program, and another one does, did a world explorers program, and she's doing her cook, a cooking class this session. We also work with Second Chance Animal Shelter, that's the most, one of the most popular programs, actually we had a waitlist for both times, and Dare comes from Second Chance and teaches kids about animal care.
We actually, I don't mean to interrupt you, but we actually, for that class, the kids don't pay a fee, what they do is donate something to the shelter in lieu of a fee for the class, so each time there's a class, you have eight children donating something to Second Chance, so.
And then the other, we were able to secure transportation for our students to be able to expand educational and extracurricular activities for them, so we work with Green Mountain Transportation and the Bennington Tennis Center, and we have been able to provide transportation for that, for the last two sessions, and then we've also, Megan, can you talk about the one world conservancy program that we?
Yes, the, the One World Conservancy Center is working with us at a very minimal cost, provide environmental education at their facility. So, the, if the weather cooperates, they go outside on the trail across the street, or they have it in the building. But they were also able, working with the state, able to secure a few things through Department of Forestry, I think, animal pelts, things like that, to have, they went ahead and did that for our, for our school, so that the kids would have that opportunity to do that there instead of having to go elsewhere. And they've just been, it's one of the great things about this program is I'll call somebody with a wild idea, and they get excited about it and, and wanna participate. Unfortunately, we didn't have enough students to participate in the Old Castle Theater Improvisation Class, and Old Castle has been really great too, in that they were actually, they were, the, the person was gonna come here for five weeks, and on the sixth week, they were gonna open the theater up to family and the public, to whoever was interested to come and, and watch the kids perform, so. I thought that would be really awesome, but unfortunately, we didn't have as many. So we're gonna revamp it in the spring and, and get some people up here to speak to it personally, so that the kids can see other people trying to pitch the idea other than us too.
We do rely on fundraising, we, to offset some of our costs, the tennis pros, that fee for children to participate, it would cost them thirty-two dollars for a half-hour session, and we only charge students fif, fif, well, twenty-five dollars, we, we didn't get our grant for transportation, so they paid twenty-five dollars for six one-hour sessions, so it's a great value for the children, and we just fundraised to offset the cost of two tennis pros and for the cost of the transportation. We also, through fundraising, were able to secure an entire Lego education program. And so kindergarten and first graders are now working with fifth-grade helpers, which is really cool to get peers teaching kids, and I'm the instructor for that program, so I've seen it, and it's all about, last week we, we made go-karts, and we did different wheels and axles, and the kids raced and had, it's a, a way to bring the science, it's based on the STEM Lego education model, they are really focusing on STEM, so we were able to get five kits. So, each K one, two K one kids work with one fifth grader or myself. And next, next week's session is catapults, and we're gonna create catapults with the Legos, and then we're gonna have, the kids are gonna create banners, and they have, they're gonna make sort of scoreboards to see how far they can get their catapults, and they're very, very excited about doing that, so it's just another way to bring science and sort of technology into the classroom in a educational way. We also have some special programs that are coming up, we have been able to work with VINS, the Vermont Institute for Natural Science, they're bringing their Raptors down, and we're gonna do an hour-long Raptor education program in January for the entire school. And that will be, we've fundraised for that program, so it will be a free program for the, for any child that attends school here. Kristin did Camp Invention last summer, which was a science program in technology. We are meeting with a couple of the teachers, Miss Watson has expressed an interest in meeting with us to bring that program back in some way, shape, or form next summer, so Megan is going to be meeting with her in the next few weeks to do that. We are really excited about the after-school program, the kids are so enthusiastic about it, and it provides parents an opportunity for their kids to be not home alone, and an affordable opportunity for them to have some really great experiences that they wouldn't otherwise necessarily be able to be a part of, so. Did you have anything else you wanted to?
No, no, that's about it.
I can't say enough about what these two ladies do for our after-school program and our kids. They, they do some really great, bring some things here to the school that normally the kids may not have access to. We had hunter safety course for eight weeks, I think.
Yes.
Which is a pretty intensive course, but because of that hunter safety course, we had a number of students that were hunting last weekend for the first time, my daughter being one, and a number of students got, actually got lucky, got, got a deer, yeah. So, it was, you know, that's just one example, the tennis has been very popular, the comic, the comic art.
Oh, we didn't talk about the comics.
The comic art.
We, a parent who no longer lives here, Heather Jones, entered, kinda connected me with Wade, and Wade's a North Bennington parent, and he teaches comics, and he's actually teaching the kids how to create a comic book, and they will have a finished, each child, finished comic book with three to share with friends or family. And it's really, it was, it's really cool, because it's only supposed to last till four thirty, but you go there at four thirty, and everybody is paying attention and doesn't wanna leave, and so, you know, they're getting something out of it, and it's just, it's great. It's really, really great to see, so, it's, it's definitely worth all the work that is put into it.
The other part that makes it successful is like, like they mentioned, is the generosity of the staff to give up their room after school, because spaces is, is, is obviously limited here, and, and teachers have things they like to do after school and stuff like that, so they've been very generous, saying, Jeff, you can use my room on this day and this day, whatever, so that the kids can have a space to do these activities. So I wanna thank the staff for, for that opportunity.
Yeah, they've been super helpful, they really are, with anything really, so, it's nice, we have a good relationship with everybody, and we're for the most part, just plugging away.
We wouldn't be able to offer as many classes if we didn't have the support of the teachers, because this, each individual, and it, it's quite diverse, the, the class offerings.
Yeah, what, yeah, what we need space for, so, yeah, it's nice.
Super, that sounds excellent.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, me too.
Larry, taking questions?
Sure. Sure.
Uh, is this a unique setup, uh, this is a well-kept secret, I mean, to some degree.
Okay.
Is this a unique financial setup, uh, nonprofit basis? I'm not aware that.
Um, well, there is actually an after-school alliance throughout, if you, I think if you Google it, there's, um, throughout the state of Vermont. And actually, I sort of became involved in this when Megan asked me about it, um, last winter. Uh, I think there's a Vermont After-School Alliance Program and then there's a, sort of a nationwide movement to um, uh, keep kids um from not being home alone and to give them educational oppor- opportunities. So, there are, I think, um, sprouting up, uh, nonprofits to, um, tap into those grant resources um on a national level. But on a state level, there's, there's been some movement um as well.
So, that's gotta be resource.
Well, you know, initially, that's why we turned it into a five oh one C three, Chris- Kristen and I. Because we were nervous that we needed more of a revenue stream or, you know, an option. And it, you know, it turns out oddly enough that we haven't had any grants, but the, the program's very successful. We have one major fundraiser right off the go- right off the bat at the beginning of the year. And it's really getting us through till the next. And with the, you know, the money that we charge for the classes, it keeps everything moving smoothly. So, it'd be great, we are looking into grant opportunities, but it definitely isn't what, you know, keeps things going right now.
Are you able to offer scholarships uh to kids that?
Yes, we are actually, the, um, so the PTO here in Shrewsbury is separate from, because it's a parent, private parent organization. And um they have allocated, I believe, a certain number of dollars. I'm not sure what that dollar amount is. And so, um, there have been a few parents that have approached, um, Megan in particular and uh said that their child wouldn't be able to participate. So, we have approached the, and we talked to Jeff and um Megan and Jeff talked about it. And then we um made a request to the PTO um to secure scholarship money for those students that otherwise wouldn't be financially able to do that, so.
That's great.
We, we don't, the, the, the idea of the program is to provide the, any child that wants the opportunity, the opportunity to um experience after school. Um, Megan and I are volunteers, so we don't, we, we're not benefiting financially. It's more out of the love of our school and, and the program.
Capacity, you're, you've got more than enough capacity to take additional kids?
Um, yeah, well, you know, it, it's not so much capacity as it is interest. I mean, we could plan a ton of stuff and if the kids don't wanna sign up, they don't sign up. So, we capped out at tennis last, I think it was twenty-three.
Right.
And decided that was, we needed twenty. So, we have fourteen, I suppose.
There's sixteen, I think, signed up for this session.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah, and it's really, part of this problem is there's a space issue. I mean, you know, we had an overflow for the, what they call the pet, pet pals, that with, with Second Chance. But it's just so many ki- only you can have so many kids in a classroom for the pets. And, and, you know, each, each class, comics had a, um, a certain number of kids because there's one teacher and it's, and it's um pretty intensive. Like, making comic books is a pretty intensive experience. So, um, in large part, it varies on the class. But sure, we could, if, as Megan said, if we had a, an interest, we could, we could fill probably every class in this building.
And we're, you know, each time, we're trying to offer more. I know that, um, it's been, this year especially, there's a lot more fifth and sixth grade participation. And we think that that has something to do with it, since it's been going since two thousand eleven. But at first, there was no fifth and sixth grade participation. So, it is evolving and we're trying to come up with as many options as possible. Um, you know, and, and we're getting there. We already have a few things for the spring and the spring doesn't start until March, so. And we're thinking about something over the winter too during GIST, but that's just in the development phase at this point.
Can you share what your budget number is?
As far as?
I'm just looking for the. What you have to raise or how, for the amount of students?
So, that really varies. I just took over in September. Um, so, we have approximately five thousand dollars in our operating budget, if you will, for now. Um, and that, that will increase slightly, um, because we just signed up, you know, the kids just signed up for their second session. So, it'll probably be about a thousand dollars. But then, we will probably have about, um, two thousand dollars roughly in expenses to pay for, um, some of the instructors' tennis transportation costs. Um, we applied for a two-thousand-dollar grant to cover all of our transportation costs. And we didn't receive that grant, so we have to offset that amount. Um, but, uh, some of the supplies, um, you know, we have an arts and crafts supply budget that runs probably about five, probably about five hundred dollars. Um, it really varies on the instructor. Um, we had our yoga, we had, we offered yoga to kids in the fall session. And the teacher, um, couldn't do it, was a community person and she couldn't do it for free. But she did offer us a, a discount for the class. Um, so I think we, we paid her like a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars for, for six weeks of an, at an hour and a half instruction. Um, so.
So, you're not being constrained by financial limitations right now?
No, we're doing okay.
No, yeah, we're okay right now.
We kind of, we kind of, it, everything's great, but we kinda took this on not knowing because Kristen did everything and did it well. So, it took two of us and I kinda, we come up with ideas and it's paid for by fundraising. I mean, we, this year is kinda fly by the seat of our pants and next year will be much more planned because we haven't done this before, so.
Like I said, we're meeting, we're gonna meet on a board in January and the plan would be to come up with a formal budget. Um, and have, uh, have be- a better sense of, um, what, what the actual cost would look like. But given that I, I literally just got a, a, a file folder full of information in September. And said, here you go. Um, you know, I think we're doing really, really well. Um, the other cost we may have is, um, we're actually trying to create a, um, to go, to go green. Um, create our own website so that parents can access the website and would be able to pay. And then would able, you know, hopefully by next fall, we'll have, um, what our schedule would look like. So, parents would be able to plan out, um, what classes they would wanna sign up their kids for. Um, you know, for, for the s- for the school year, so.
And it'll help automate the registration process because it's very tedious. It takes a while to, once everything's in. So, that'll streamline it a little bit and free up some more time for scheduling more fun stuff, so.
What are the most popular, what could this fall, what were the, the most popular after-school activities? Tennis, it sounded like. Tennis, I know how to pick.
Pet pals, tennis.
Pet pals.
And.
Legos.
We had.
Legos is popular.
Yeah, Legos is popular. It wasn't as pop- you know, the kindergartners and the first graders didn't participate as much in the first session of school, I think, to, because parents needed their kids to adjust. But the second session that we've had, there's a lot more kindergartners and first graders participating. Um, so, but I think the most popular programs are, um, tennis, the, um,
any paper craft, April LaCroy is a parent here. She and Michelle Oppenauer kinda teamed up and just do amazing things that, I mean, it would drive me nuts. But they are ama- and, and the kids love them, so they're packed every session. And, um, they're actually doing a Christmas crafts and we, we're putting on an event December third, Tuesday. It's a wreath decorating event. So, the kids pay, so we can cover just the cost of expense and they decorate a live wreath to take home, so.
Congratulations on that.
Thanks.
It's, uh, it's good to hear.
Yeah, it's very exciting.
Yeah. Yeah.
You're welcome.
It's good to hear there's gonna be a next year too.
So far, so good. We don't know what's gonna happen, but yeah, it's positive.
Thank you for your energy enthusiasm, you just, the two of you are making it happen.
Look for the website. It will, we're hoping by, um, well, this, the target projection for getting the website up and running was December first. Um, we've been working with Jen Holly, who's a local Shrewsbury resident. Um, and, um, but if not by December, it would be January. And then the goal is to have our third session be green. So, we, kids would be able to sign up right from the website, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, alrighty, superintendents report.
Uh, well, this, uh, what is listed here is what was this yellow sheet that you've got in your packet. And this was a joint statement of the Vermont School Boards Association and the Vermont Superintendent's Association. Uh, it's called Agenda for a World-Class Education System. And I think it really was, uh, and I'll take any input from others that have been to meetings where this was happening. Um, but it, it really was a statement about what they see as high-quality education and trying to, um, I guess I would say, influence policy to be driving some of the educational initiatives towards what, uh, these organizations feel would be the best education for our students. So, there's some interesting parts of it that, um, call for really looking at, um, how we adjust our calendar to best meet needs of families and students. Uh, there's a, a part of it that is about technology and what the expectations are and a sort of a gentle nudge for legislation to establish funding mechanisms uh, to be able to have equitable procurement of, uh, all of the technological assets that we need and have grown accustomed to. But many schools, uh, have difficulty funding. So, if there are gonna be educational expectations, then we also have an expectation for some assistance and funding. Um, then there are some comments about, um, effective leadership and professional development. So, I think it's just a model of what are the, um, what these two groups feel is best practice and can guide further development of educational policy. That's my perception of it. Fran, you know more about it? No?
Are you kidding?
No, I thought maybe you had been in on some of the.
Oh, I, I've been to some of those meetings and things, but you, you know, the questions I get asked the most and it has really, well, it may have something to do with that, is what is the Common Core? And I'm saying, well, you know, I says, that, that's been talked about and I don't think there's people still know actually what it's about. And I know some board members still don't realize what it is. And I am saying, well, you know, it's a different type of teaching, but I said, you know, I'm not in the classroom. I'd really have to see it.
Right, and I think it varies by content too, what it actually is. Um, and then my second item was just to say that we have, um, over the past couple of years, developed standards-based report cards where they are really aligned with the standards that are expected to be met at each grade level. And we most recently updated those and just sent them out to the principals, um, today. Didn't we send them out today?
Did.
Um, and we had teams of, um, teachers working on each of the content areas to make sure that the standards were, um, appropriate for each grade level according to those, um, expectations.
Are those consistent with Common Core standards?
Yes, yes.
So, they're new, uh, will be getting report cards soon? And are they gonna be using those new standards then, or is it for next year?
Oh, no, it's for now, it's for now.
Yep.
And we have been implementing the Common Core over the past, uh, two, almost three years now. So, it's not new really, but it really is, um, in, in math, for instance, it really is sort of a different philosophy at looking at the progressions of how, um, students develop ideas over the grade levels. Um, according to what the students can be expected developmentally to do at each age. So, and also building on ideas, um, in different strands like geometry or algebra or, um, number concept, um, you know, what would be expected, um, what do we want for outcomes? And then how do we structure, um, the learning along the way? So that it is, um, effectively integrated in, uh, in a continuum instead of just, oh, well, we're gonna, we're gonna teach, uh, three-dimensional shapes in this grade and then they don't see it again until they get to eleventh grade and it's how do we do geometry? And it feels like a different subject. But it's more to make it continuous across all of the grade levels. It's a very complex, um, system, um, you know, it has its pros and cons. Uh, but we'll see how the, the, uh, new S-Back looks when we roll into that new testing, which won't be until, not this coming spring, but the following spring, two thousand fifteen. Yes, Larry, I know you love those assessments.
You know, I'm gonna.
I know you love them.
Donna, wh- when are we, when are we gonna know if it's working? And I, I'm not pinning it down to a date, but you know, we just went through fourteen years with no child left behind. And we came out the other side and we said, well, it wasn't that a futile exercise. And, and here we are entering a whole new program and all I wanna know is it works or it doesn't work? And what, what's the cutoff point? If it's not working, have we got discipline enough to say?
It's another fourteen years.
Well, I guess, I guess it's frequently not made up by educators, Larry. That's what, that's what's always the puzzler is, you know, who made up the system?
Yeah.
But I, I think for us, you know, those are grand ideas and yes, a context where we can teach and learn. Uh, but for us, I think looking more closely at formative assessments is like, what does each child know each day? Or e- each month, what did they learn and are they making progress according to their own continuum? Or what can we expect them to learn? And we do have assessments that are more closely monitoring that sort of learning.
Are the R assessments?
Um, well, we actually know they're nationally-normed assessments so that we know, you know, are, are second graders learning and accomplishing what second graders around the country would be accomplishing? So that there's guidance of, you know, we could all be learning down here and making, plotting progress. But if all, everybody else is up here, we gotta, we've gotta catch up. So, national norms help us to know that sort of, how do we fit in with that big picture? Um, but then, uh, those.
The opposite's true, Donna. What if, what if we're being held down because we're trying to conform to something that, if we were out on our own, so to speak?
Right.
We would be, as you just described it up here.
Right, right.
And there's no guarantee that, that just because you follow this path, you're gonna be up here, that I can determine.
No, there's no guarantee.
And that's what I'm concerned about. I, I happen to think we've got a great staff and a great facility and, and we're gonna educate our kids. I just don't wanna see us be held back from accomplishing great things.
So, Larry, you're saying, I don't wanna put words in your mouth again. The second or third thing.
I've got so many feet in there, Dave, you wouldn't.
But you, uh, but the com- so the Common Core, and, and I'm one of those, Fran, one of those school board members who, you know, doesn't entirely understand it. But, uh, if the Common Core is, is essentially, um, common outcomes that we're, that we're saying, we're, our students are gonna be expected to be here, you know, in this subject by this grade, by the end of, of that time period. How we get there is not something, and this is my question, I guess, and it's in response to what you just said, Larry. How we get there isn't something that's being imposed by anyone other than ourselves.
That's right.
The curriculum that we choose is, is still our decision.
Yes, yep.
And, and doesn't that leave the door open to exceed the expectations of what Common Core puts in front of us? If we can say, okay, we've met your criteria, we're there, but we're also farther down or farther up than we, we would be if we held just to your suggestions.
Right.
And I think that's a challenge, that's, that's where we.
It is a challenge and I think it, uh, it takes a little courage too, Larry. Because I think that the.
Take support.
Assessments make people fearful of not making those success indicators. So that if you were to open the door and say, but think imaginatively and do really, uh, different and great things with your students, uh, they're a little bit afraid to take that step to be that creative if you're, if, you know, you have that sort of environment. So, I understand what you mean.
Isn't that unhealthy?
It is, well, it's healthy in both ways, but you have to encourage people.
Isn't that what we encourage our children to do?
Yes.
Take that extra step?
Yes, and we need to.
Do, do something.
I've always encouraged staff members to take the extra step and think in the big ideas. It's just sometimes a. It's just sometimes a little hard to convince.
But their measurement's on the core.
Yes, the measurement is.
So there's, there's, there's the driver.
But the core, the core doesn't, the core isn't restrictive though. You can teach the core in many creative and dynamic ways.
Right. Doesn't matter how you teach it, where you get, how you get that.
It's just that, that takes imagination and courage.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Awesome.
Good.
Um, yes, I was just gonna mention that um, and I won't take any more of your time, but when we had the uh, joint meeting with the um, SVSU Finance Board and uh, the one last, the one last night, the, I know, meeting, meeting, meeting. Um, the one last night was also with the Select Board and the CDC Board to try to put all of our heads together in the community about how are we going to look at our common interests in providing the best education for all of our children for our community's growth. So it was a lively discussion, um, and each group uh, presented a piece of it. I, I think it's a really a start of a great collaborative effort here in the community to help everyone understand each other's needs. But I just, I was just gonna pass this out. I did a um, PowerPoint presentation and uh, about sort of, and some of you may have seen pieces of this already about where we are in the SVSU and what are some of the initiatives that we're working on that uh, we're look, and where improvements uh, would be for growth and development for the coming years. So they may have budget implications, but I just, for the Select Board and for the CDC Board, I just wanted to provide some background of our um, SVSU and how our students are doing, where some of the strengths and challenges are. So I have the PowerPoint and would be happy to do it some night if you want me to show it for you, but I don't wanna take your time tonight, but it just was.
Donna, the Select Board, you mentioned the meeting with the Select Board, not Shasberry Select.
No.
No, it was uh, Bennington.
Bennington Select.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they've been, you know, we've really been trying to work on some um, economic development initiatives and workforce development and just trying to bring all those pieces together for the whole community.
And we may be able to do that at the next meeting, maybe.
I would, I'd be happy to.
Cause I'd like to go with.
I brought my uh, PowerPoint in case you wanted to see it, but we're getting right onto almost two hours now, so I will let you go tonight.
Okay.
Well, I'm blowing it for Fran. He's had all these short meetings in a row and now, here we go. Let's do the PowerPoint.
Yeah, I know and I'm, I'm looking, not looking good. Oh, yeah. Okay, I'll say. Thank you. Alrighty, uh, Chair's report. The only thing I had, I wanna, the board to be aware, we still have a water line that we have to do, yeah, out front. And I, I, um, you're gonna get with Jay or whatever, cause we gotta have the figures on it anyway and I know.
Well, I talked to, I talked to Jay a couple of times about it.
Right, and I know we.
I don't know, you, you wanna speak to it or?
No, go ahead.
Well, last time, the last time we talked and you probably the same information is, we're, we're using the Town Engineer right now, which is Outer Creek. Um, they're the ones that done the preliminary looking and work at it. They said that we need to pay probably roughly three thousand for them to do the initial draft work for it. To figure out all the plans and, and what it's gonna cost. Um, and they gave us a, a very rough estimate, no more than fifty thousand to do the whole project.
Who was this?
Outer Creek. Um, I don't know if the board's interested in looking at other engineers. Um, that's something Jay and I tossed around, whether it's something you're interested in or not, but we are using this that one engineer right now for, for that. And we have talked about it, um, budgeting for next year, looking at that as a possibility. Um, so, if you wanna add to that frame.
Well, the only rea- reason I bring it up is, is again, we're in the budget seasons. We got SVSU, we haven't done MAU yet. This may be a problem, it may not. I don't know. And then, and it's, that's why I also have a near bid approval process. I don't wanna say, I wanna lower that, it's, it's fifteen thousand right now. I'm kinda thinking, we oughta lower everything to about five hundred dollars so we can keep a, keep track, keep an eye on what's going on. Um, we had the drainage and blacktop done out back and I, I didn't know about that, but that's, that's okay. We had the monies in the budget and stuff. But I think we oughta keep a real eye on what's going on this budget season. I mean, if there's, I, I've told Jeff, if there's something that's gotta be done and I've talked with Jay, then we gotta do it. I mean, it's a no brainer. I mean, it's, it's not, but I think just to keep an eye on everything that's, that's happening, uh, this, this water line bothers me a little bit. Cause you don't know, I mean, it, it broke up by the fence up there and who knows if it's, and we, this is something we're, we're obviously gonna have to do. And instead of doing all the black topping and all that, that stuff, it's, I think this kinda trumps that. Um, I also talked with Karen Melinger the other day uh, about the generator. Uh, she had approached me and, and said, well, they're looking for the school to put fifteen thousand dollars in for maintenance for the generator. I says, uh, and, and I did tell her, I said, well, I think we have an agreement that the school got the generator for the town. And that's paid for. It was only a dollar, but it's still paid for. And we were gonna run the fuel line to it and supply fuel, which we have done. And that's gonna be the town, but I did ask her, I said, well, I really wanna see the budget for that generator. And she's going to do that for me because I, I, I don't even have a clue what's in there, but I, I can't imagine it being thirty thousand dollar budget for a, a generator. Uh, that's got nothing for hours on it and it's, it's still a new generator and uh, the middle school had it for seven, seven years, whatever the, the years are. And it's, there's nothing for time on that thing, so I can't imagine us having any uh, real problem with it. Um, other than that, that's basically all I've got. Questions?
Fran, speaking to the generator, I had kind of a part and lot conversation with Jerry Madison.
Yes.
And uh, Jerry said the generator is functional.
Yeah.
It might take some jury rigging to, to supply the school at, at the most, uh, to, to run some lock, so records and wires from it.
Right.
To the school, uh, to make it uh, usable for the school.
Yeah.
So uh, I, I'd suggest we bring Jerry back in and, and maybe give us a, a.
I, I know there's been a talk about there's a switch to, to make it automatic if, if something happens. That's like something like twelve thousand dollars, but I still don't know, you know, I wanna see everything that they have in this budget. So we can take a look at it. I mean, I, I don't think we're, believe we're gonna have any monies to put in the, the budget, uh, fifteen thousand dollars. We just took a hit on the pre-K for twenty, so, I mean, these things are all gonna add up.
That was my point is, it's still serviceable. We can still do something with it should the need arise.
Right, yeah.
But it may not be the Cadillac uh, situation that we want eventually, so.
Yeah, right, right. Okay. Well, that's all I had. If anybody's got anything else?
Well, with the advancing timeline and budget season coming on.
Yes.
You guys went to the Finance Committee meeting last, last night, SVSU? And was there any output that you wanna share with the board as a result of that meeting or was it the preliminary meeting?
We've.
I heard a percentage earlier and I don't wanna say it again.
I'll say it. Um, this, we basically have heard all the input, we're probably gonna get on that. And it's a ten to twelve percent increase. Now, we've, we have asked Rick, uh, he was looking for some numbers and uh, I said, listen, doesn't matter what kinda number you're gonna put out there. We've all agreed to go back to zero to see what this thing is gonna look like, how, how it's gonna hurt programs and stuff. Obviously, we're gonna probably approve something other than zero, but we need to see what that is and what we, we can live with, what we can't live without. So, uh, and that's gonna be, I think that's gonna be at our next meeting next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, right?
I think if they can get that together.
I think. If.
Well, the agenda was released today, Fran.
Just for those of our members that are on SVSU or, you know, that's.
It's an overview.
It, it's hard to comprehend after last year's big increases.
I know.
That there's another ten to twelve percent increase in expenses.
Yeah. Well, a lot of this is going to.
The SVSU that will be passed on to us. That's all.
A lot of this, most of it is special ed and you're looking at, um, I think Wendy said four directors. Am I correct or am I wrong? Three or four anyway.
I think it was three and then someone.
That we don't have, we still don't know what that cost is yet, cause she hasn't brought it. I would assume that'll come at the next, next budget meeting, wouldn't it?
I thought she did present.
Not a figure though, not as far as what the money is for those directors itself.
I think they'll probably talk more about that at the Personnel Committee meeting tomorrow.
Oh, okay. No, that's, that's you, Larry.
Anyway, that, that's, just a comment, that's just.
Yeah, there's, there's something there. We, we gotta, we'll see what happens, but.
Go to your question, Pat. Uh, we started these October fifteenth and we've been, I think, one, about one a week. I don't think we missed too many weeks. And that, that's been great in giving us a preview. Each department is uh, has done a report as to their, their piece of the pie.
Their needs, yeah.
And uh, some of it is, is uh, is considerable, so.
We had technology at this last one that we had. Frank Barnes was there, so.
Admin and, and uh, uh, technology.
Yeah.
Then we're gonna get an overview, as I understand it, we'll get an overview based on if we accepted it as is or if we backed it up. To a, to the neutral starting point and decided what we can, what we can do with and do without.
Um, as far as budgeting goes, what's the, what's the timeline for us, for our budget and what's the process gonna look like? We, we need, I know, just backing up from when we need to have a, an approval.
Well, we're gonna have to have, we're gonna have to have the SVSU first. We usually start ours in December.
December, okay, so next meeting then.
Yeah, yeah, we should have started.
Remember last year, Dave, that we.
I thought I remembered looking at it in November, so.
Yeah, we started to look at it and then we had to wait and wait and wait for the SU to.
Yeah.
To uh, put their piece together, so.
Yeah, so. Alright, anything else? Anybody got any other? Motion to adjourn.
Um, wait a minute, wait a.
Yeah, go ahead.
Ooh, just made it, Larry.
We covered an awful lot of it. We, we've been to a wrap the meetings. David and I uh, went to the School Board Association meeting up in Lake Maury. Dave, you may wanna speak to that. You were there both days. Um, I was there one day and, and we jointly attended a special ed uh, workshop. Uh, I think we took away, uh, the takeaway point for me was not everything that appears to be in special ed is fixed. There is some flexibility, uh, and it's, you have to be kinda creative in, in looking at that differently. And we may, we may choose to do that, Pat, going to your, your awareness and, and um, concern about expenses, so. But that, that was, Dave, any other?
Yeah, it was, I, uh, it was a great conference and I encourage anyone to attend it. The, I went to two sessions. They, they have breakup sessions that you can choose from a menu of, you know, either ten, I guess, different choices. And I went to one on uh, what was titled Calendar two point oh. And it was a presentation by superintendents in the northwest part of the state who had been looking at an alternative school year calendar that looked somewhat different from the way it currently looks, but not tremendously different. Uh, but it met with a lot of resistance. I, I think it wasn't sold very well to public and there were misunderstandings and uh, nobody had control of it. Uh, so, uh, that was interesting anyway to hear about. Uh, and then I went to a session on um, interest-based bargaining negotiations. That was quite interesting. Yep.
Uh, one other meeting we attended was the uh, the first joint meeting with the Bennington Select Board. Again, it was just Bennington and the MAU uh, folks that put that on. And I would encourage anybody and everybody to look at the uh, the Cat TV rerun or the Bennington Banner article. Or get your hands on a copy of this uh, PowerPoint presentation. If, if you're not surprised and shocked by some of the information that was presented uh, in that report, I will, I'll personally eat it. Uh, it, it, and we've gotta believe that some of the numbers in there do come from Shasberry. Um, so I think, I think we're in there as well and, and it's up to, it's up to this board to, to make themselves aware of, of some really serious concerns that, that these folks are dealing with. So I'd encourage anybody to do that. Um, we also uh, had, uh, excuse me, that, yeah, that was the, that was not a joint board meeting. That was a presentation of Mount Anthony to the Bennington Select Board. The other joint meeting that took place was a common board meeting uh, where Steve Stitzel came down, did a presentation of.
At the middle school.
It was titled, uh, The Way Things Work and we were given, Dave, you were at that one also. And we were given an overview as to uh, Act one fifty-three, how it's changed a little bit, how it impacts uh, uh, some of our situations locally. Some interesting things in there and I believe we were given a pretty accurate snapshot on what some of our insurance concerns are gonna be as we move into negotiations and, did I get that right, Dave? Okay. Cause that's, that's gonna be a, a very interesting topic. And Steve was uh, pretty good about outlining uh, some of the things that Shasberry in particular ought to be, ought to be aware of.
Yep.
Uh, again, we have more and more meetings uh, uh, coming up. We've got another one tomorrow, which is Personnel, which is uh, I've been assigned to be our representative there. And that's it.
You're sure?
I'm done.
Okay, alright. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There you go.
I don't think I got this right.
That was brutal, dude. Whoa.
Sure. Oh, wow.